Good evening, welcome to the eighth meeting of the year. This is June second, twenty twenty five. Alyssa, can you please read the uh statement publication?
In compliance with chapter two thirty one of public law nineteen seventy five, notice of this meeting to be held at the criminal justice building sixty one Main Street South River has been published in the home news Tribune on January fifth, twenty twenty five, posted on the municipal building bulletin board, the borough website and the front door of the criminal justice building at sixty one Main Street South River.
Whoa.
Mayor Hindy.
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Here.
Councilman Santos.
Here.
Councilman Bazemian.
Here.
Councilman Janikopoulos.
Here.
Councilman Gertenski.
Here.
Council President Seola.
Here.
Please stand for a seat.
Twenty twenty five, so to flag the United States of America. And to your bumper which stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing in the room of silence. May be seated. Uh we have nothing for the motivations uh agenda session. For second reading, there are four that we're gonna be reading off. First one is uh the twenty twenty five dash thirteen with the sale of EMS equipment, which uh we donated to the Milltown Rescue Squad. Uh the second one, which is the twenty twenty five fourteen bamboo, Andrew, could you just uh?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh yeah, twenty twenty five fourteen, it amends your property maintenance article to regulate family plantings in Gravel River. Uh if you just want me to go on.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh twenty twenty five fifteen, that's an ordinance amending uh chapter one oh eight entitled animals. That just uh includes your animal control officer in the enforcement of that um of that article. Uh twenty twenty five sixteen, that amends vehicles and traffic concerning Main Street.
And then uh first reading, there's gonna be four as well, two for lead and two, two for bonds, five, I'm sorry, so it's actually three. Um lead.
Yeah, uh Mayor, remember we have the presentation.
Yep.
From the uh company, we're required by state law that multiple family houses have to have a lip paint inspection. This has no expense to the borough and we have twenty five dollar uh administrative fee put in that he collects in terms of the borough. Um it's a no brainer, we have to do it, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Joe, the other two, the bond.
Yeah, we have two bond ones. Uh yes, it's a budget that's been adopted. Uh this is what we usually do to bond or to after. We have various public works, uh trucks we're gonna buy, a salt shed. Uh police and fire have various equipments, park improvements, uh roads, we're doing part apprentice, Tyson Cleveland, and then computer equipment we'll buy. And then on the water side, it is do a wellhouse and other repairs in the water system.
Thank you, and then uh Andrew Lesman.
Uh sure, Mr. Mayor. Uh twenty twenty five twenty one, that's just an order, an ordinance authorizing an agreement pursuant to NJSA forty A colon twenty dash one at SEC uh for fifty five Main Street.
Alright, thank you. Alyssa, can you please read off twenty twenty five dash thirteen?
Ordinance twenty twenty five thirteen, the ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of various EMS equipment not needed for public use accordance with the provisions, NJSA forty A colon twelve dash twenty one point one to the Milltown Rescue Squad.
Motion wait for full reading.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Ballas.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to open up to the public. First, second, third.
Motion closed public, second.
Um motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilman Bazemian.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council discussion. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, second, second by Councilman Krasinski.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Santos?
Yes.
Councilman Bazemian?
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty five dash fourteen.
Ordinance twenty twenty five fourteen, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter two fifty eight entitled property maintenance.
Motion wait for full reading.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilman Krasinski.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to open this to the public. First call. Is this for the ordinance here? Second call, third.
Motion closed public.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Ballas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, council discussion. On the motion, okay. Second by Council, Councilwoman Ballas, I second by Councilman Krasinski.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman Bazemian?
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty five fifteen.
Ordinance twenty twenty five fifteen, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter one oh eight entitled hours.
Motion wait for full reading.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilman Krasinski.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to open this to the public. First call, second.
Motion closed public.
Motion by Council President Seola.
Second.
Second by Councilman Krasinski, council.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Council discussion. By the motions.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Council, Councilwoman Ballas, second by Councilman Bazemian.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman Bazemian?
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty five dash sixteen.
Ordinance twenty twenty five sixteen, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter one ninety three entitled vehicles and traffic.
Motion wait for full reading.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Ballas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Uh I'd like to open this to the public. First call, second call.
Motion closed public.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilman, Councilwoman Ballas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a council discussion? Do I have a motion? A motion? Alyssa, this uh ordinance dies.
Mm-hmm, Aaron Dunn, you are next, I will give you the ordinance as you're given.
Alright, Alyssa, we're gonna go to the ordinance uh first reading twenty twenty five dash seventeen.
Ordinance twenty twenty five seventeen, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter two fifty eight entitled property maintenance.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty five dash seventeen on its first reading by title only. The clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held on June the twenty third from seven P M. Uh twenty twenty five, but video conference via Zoom. We're in the council chambers of the criminal justice building sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman Bazemian?
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty five dash eighteen.
Ordinance twenty twenty five eighteen, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter one fifty five of the Borough Code entitled fees.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty five dash eighteen on its first reading by title only and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held seven P M. On June the twenty third, twenty twenty five, by video conference via Zoom. We're in the council chambers of the criminal justice building sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman Bazemian?
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty five dash nineteen.
Ordinance twenty twenty five nineteen, bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements and the acquisition of various capital equipment, appropriating one million five hundred seventy five thousand dollars, therefore authorizing the issuance of one million fourteen thousand six hundred eighty two dollars bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof, authorized in by the Borough of South River and the County of Middlesex, New Jersey.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen on its first reading by title only and clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M. On June the twenty third, twenty twenty five, by video conference via Zoom. We're in the council chambers of criminal justice building sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilman Bazemian.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Santos?
Yes.
Councilman Bazemian?
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty five dash twenty.
Ordinance twenty twenty five twenty, bond ordinance providing for improvements to the water treatment, storage and distribution system, appropriating nine hundred fifty thousand dollars, therefore authorizing the issuance of nine hundred thousand dollars bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof, authorized in by the Borough of South River and the County of Middlesex, New Jersey.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty on its first reading by title only and clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M. On June the twenty third, twenty twenty five, by video conference via Zoom. We're in the council chambers of criminal justice building sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Uh motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman Bazemian?
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty five dash twenty one.
Ordinance twenty twenty five twenty one, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, adopting the financial agreement under NJSA forty A colon twenty dash one at SEC and authorizing tax exemption and payment in lieu of taxes with a C five Main Street, so as our urban renewal L C.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty one on its first reading by title only and clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M. on June twenty third, twenty twenty five, by video conference via Zoom. We're in the council chambers of the criminal justice building sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Uh motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilman Bazemian.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Santos?
Yes.
Councilman Bazemian?
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Yeah, now I wanna go into news reports, uh C E M, Justin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief update on all the active capital projects. Uh the twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four local aid programs, we've been in touch with the contractor and he told us that they expect to be back on site to manipulate the third week of June, approximately June sixteenth. We will notify all the homeowners in the borough forty hours beforehand. Um the twenty twenty three local transportation projects fund, that's for Albert Street, Franklin Street, Mossette Avenue. We submitted plans and documents to the D O T and they're still under review. The twenty twenty five local aid program for Apprentice Avenue, Tyson Avenue, Cleveland Avenue, the borough received the grant and our office submitted a proposal for professional services. The twenty twenty three electrical substation maintenance, uh the contractor submitted the final report. We approved it and approved the closeout change order, which is on tonight's agenda. The twenty twenty four program will submit an R F P for same in a couple of weeks. The D E P stormwater system grant application, our survey department is currently working on this year portion of the project and they're making progress. And then last, the twenty twenty six local aid application is due on July first, twenty twenty five. Our office submitted a proposal for professional services, it's already stated with the same and uh the borough will need to select uh three roads for these uh for the improvements. So we'll work with that public works, the borough to determine those routes. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council anything for uh C E M? Uh Joe?
Just a few things. Uh first one is, there's a resolution for repairs at the Jack Street pump station that's under uh co-op agreement. It's over the bit threshold, so we have to give a resolution. And then resignation to hire all the summer record employees.
That's it. Council anything for Joe? Cage?
Yes, Mayor. On uh Saturday, June twenty eighth, we're having our shred event from nine A M. to twelve down at the D P W yard. So bring your stuff down and have a shred.
Anything for me to add?
Is there really not many that convert to the shred? Cause I know some have like five.
No, this is our own. It's not out there in the county, so.
There's a number of it.
Yep.
Uh Fire Chief Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. You'll see, resolution one seven nine is asking for authorization for two fund drives for the fire department, one in June, one in July. That's all I have.
Anything for uh Chief? Andrew?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alyssa?
Uh just that the primary election will be on June tenth. Uh early voting starts on June third to June eighth. Uh Tuesday through Saturday, it's gonna be from ten to eight and Sunday it's gonna be ten to six. And the closest location to us would be uh the East Brunswick Community Center or the Sayerville Senior Center to early vote. And that's it.
Thank you. Art?
Mayor, thank you. I have a couple of updates. First of all, we're down to the last ten percent of the water meter project. I can only urge the residents who haven't put, had their meters changed out, please do because the next step would be that you would receive a summons to go to court. But we do have an ordinance that says we're entitled to access to the uh meters to get this done. So we're down to, I guess, less than ten percent. Uh the next thing is the battery project is on schedule. As you can see, the new fence is up, all the equipment is in. It's almost completed on wiring. We'll be doing testing in the next couple of weeks. We'll be ready for July first to add the additional battery equipment onto the uh project. And the uh next thing I have is we have a meeting on the water main project. Uh I can report that um most of the survey been done. They're gonna finish the rest of the survey in July. The test pit excavations are forty percent complete. Um they were going out today to examine all the test pits again. They're having some settling, doing all the rain. So they had more of the lot of potholes. Um on the bill list today, they checked for five thousand dollars to the I bank for the application. We're almost in the process of uh getting that to the I bank. And design is fifty percent done. And that is all we have on the water main project. And on the resolutions, um resolution one seventy five authorizing execution of software product. That's software for the code enforcement officer that's gonna allow her to use a tablet instead of having to handwrite everything and bring us up to the twenty first century with that. Um the next one is authorizing the award of a contract, L E W environmental, that's for the lit testing. Um Joe went over the pumping services, one. And the other one is uh one eighty seven. We are authorizing execution of professional services agreement with Rutgers. Uh we are required to have an employee assistance program. Uh the new GIF we've won two that's not paid for that, so the borough was required to pay for that. Uh just like the the uh testing for C D L drivers. That's it.
Alright, thank you.
If there's any other ideas, I just wanted to bring up, is there any update on what's happening with the health spot property? Cause I'm getting.
Yeah, I hope and and believe we have issued multiple summonses and they don't show up to court. And it's not, the court basically said have to keep a life safety issue, prevent the issue of pension warrant. But we're just to the point where issuing summonses um don't really wanna get the borough to to take care of it because then it's gonna be a lien and the person who owns that property already has not paid taxes on some of the other properties we've only. But we know about it. We were very upset the condition it was, we're afraid and all that. Okay?
Well, I mean, there's people.
What we can do is write summon.
Cause people living behind also, they're getting all their little creatures and uh and stuff starting to grow into their yards.
I agree.
Alright, um Councilman Krasinski?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh the office on aging. Actually, this uh let's see, Monday, June thirtieth, we're gonna have a coun- country line event.
Jeez.
So that event is uh one dollar recommended for a contribution and everything too. Where it's gonna be, I'm not sure. Uh I think it may be at fifty five Main Street. Depending on how many people they have uh coming. The uh New Jersey Water Vehicle Commission, mobile unit is fully booked. There's nothing. Uh I believe they're gonna try to see if they can get another uh sign up. But uh right now, the unit that they have is uh totally full. There is a free bone density screening that's coming to the office on aging. That will be on June nineteenth. Uh you have to schedule for an appointment if transportation is available. And you must sign up uh sign up the G A N today. Uh let's see, of course, D P W said they are gonna have a list of actual paper shred. That's coming Saturday on June twenty eighth from nine to twelve, and that's the township. And the office on aging is making a fund that's available for members who qualify for the requirement of assistance. And this is for the New Jersey Property Tax Credit Program update. Uh there's a lot of features that uh some people don't understand, but this includes everything with the uh P T R and the ANCL program and also the senior freeze. Uh so if you have any questions or or uh any uh concerns about the matter and everything too, and you wanted to speak to someone, make an appointment with the office on aging. And that phone number is seven three two two five seven two three four zero. With that, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ballas.
Yeah, well, and actually she just wanted, I wanted to thank Teresa Hutchinson and the members of the Cultural Arts and Heritage Commission on the terrific job you did on planning and coordinating Memorial Day parade. It was a great turnout by the people of South River, cheering the song and 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 everything. It really was nice. I also wanna thank the police and fire department, the V F W, the American Legion, and all the organizations that participated and the marching bands. Um and again, thank you to the town who came out. It it made it very special that we could remember all the fallen heroes in in town. And again, thank you and your team. You did a great job. And for the library, um the library summer reading kickoff is June twenty fourth. The theme for summer reading is color your world. They are also planning some events such as Eyes of the Wild, Gidgetu and a bubble party. They are also teaming up with Rutgers Behavioral Health for five programs which are all free, including tie dye and sensory power hour. Again, these, go to their website and and find out all the wonderful programs they have. And their Juneteenth program will be on June seventeenth at six thirty P M. at the library. That's all I have.
Okay, Councilman Bazemian?
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um I echo what Donna says about the uh the trade and all the organizations that uh uh put that together. It was a very fun day and very well organized. Working with Adam on the website at the borough, you will now notice that um there is a new tab where if you click on it, it has the current info on uh borough projects, projects that were currently working on, like roads to be paved, park improvements and some other areas. The tab is at the top of the website and it's called Projects Blog. It'll be updated as quickly as possible when status changes to these projects. This will allow residents to get a quick update on current borough projects. And we will uh put additions to it. It's something that's just not what's there. It's the only thing that'll be there in future. It'll be a work in progress um to give the residents an update of uh all the different areas as fast as we can um to keep them up on the current stats. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman DeSantis?
Uh Board of Education update, on May twenty second, I attended the school curriculum fair. All school buildings utilized to showcase programs being offered and student projects and artwork on display. Also included were live performances and a petting zoo at Denny Stadium. Event was very well organized and a great representation of the Board of Education's continued commitment to our children. Event was well attended despite the rainy weather. That same night, at the monthly board event meeting, was the swearing in of a new board member, Uche Anwudwe, who's taking over the vacated term, so don't be up for election for the two-year term at the end of the year. High school graduation is scheduled for Thursday, June nineteenth on the football field at six P M. where they're permitting. And the next public board event meeting is Monday, June sixteenth at seven P M. my school in twenty. For the recreation advisory board, uh Pop Warner Football and Cheer registration is currently open. Football for ages five through thirteen and cheer for ages three through fourteen. And that is your age as of July thirty first of twenty twenty five. You can visit the borough website for more details to register. Go to W W W dot South River N J dot org, click Departments, then Parks and Recreation, and you'll see a link to enroll. If you have any issue online, you can call the office at seven three two two five four 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 one two. The next recreation advisory board meeting will be next Tuesday, June tenth at six thirty P M. at fifty five Green Street. Residents are welcome and encouraged to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes, Mayor. Um last month, I attended the uh Water Resource Association meeting in uh New Brunswick. And uh we talked about the uh water runoff and what the county is doing for rainwater runoff management. And during the meeting, they made us aware that there will be a uh oh, something for free. The people in Middlesex County can go to the Lower Raritan Watership Partnership. It's one oh one Raritan Avenue in Highland Park. And they do free boat building every Wednesday in June and July from six to eight P M. That's every Wednesday, so if you want, that's Middlesex County thing. And then also, just in case anyone missed it, there was a fishing derby here at Daley's Pond this last weekend. And uh if you attended, I heard it was, we had pretty good weather, the rain didn't come, so it was well attended. And the pond is stocked, so if you're into fishing, you know, we have uh fish here in town that you could do that. And the Environmental uh and Chatri Commission is having a meeting this uh was this coming Thursday, June fifth, down at uh forty eight Washington. If anyone wants to attend, it's a public meeting. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Council President Seola?
Thank you, Mayor. Um real quick, again, the E D C, economic development, uh they had their get together. Lot, some businesses did show up. I was very disappointed that many of the businesses in town didn't show up. There was a lot of very useful information given out that night. And it's a shame because it could definitely help the businesses in town with grants and low interest loans. So again, when the E D C has this and the state is there, please come to it. It's gonna benefit you as a business in town. We have businesses opening up that were overwhelmed about this information. They loved it and just trying to get it out to every business in town. So please, get, stay alert. The the everything's, the invitations are mailed out to each business in town. So stay alert on that. That'll be what I have.
Thank you. I'll hold mine. Uh I would like to open it to the public. You got five minutes. Please state your name and your address.
Good evening, Teresa Hutchinson, thirty eight Virginia Street. Uh I thank you for the thank yous for the parade. I chair Cultural Arts and Heritage Commission. We have a whole group of people working on this parade the day after the previous parade and a lot of people are in this this room right now who help us. And uh I just wanna give a shout out to everybody. Um of course, cultural arts, uh on on my commission along with me is our vice chair, Peter Bonner. We also have our members, Stephanie Finley, um our fire chief, Smith, we have Robin Preseck. We have um uh Randy Lundie and um a couple of other folks. Uh but the the folks I just mentioned were the folks that worked real hard on this parade. The borough administration works real hard with us and as I said, they're in this room right now. And uh just a big thank you to everybody. I wanted to also thank real quickly our sponsors uh for supporting us. And they are, this year Cyclogam Unlimited on William Street, G N S Lawn Service on Whitehead, Gold Star in Whitehead, User Quality Construction and Grow, Little Pipeline. Uh they, their main office is in Minneapolis. Um the Portuguese Club, we're expecting a donation from them. The Portuguese Fisherman and Teakway and Trucking. Just wanna thank all the sponsors and again, it couldn't happen without this borough pitching in and helping us. So just a big thank you to everybody. And again, thank you for respecting our fallen heroes. And that's really when when the twenty six was all about. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
My name is Darren Grill and live at twenty Montesolo Way. And my big concern now is the closing of Collins Drive into Montesolo Way. It's a disaster. The main thing for us is the sports reasons I wanna talk about. Safety, cost, time and environment. Safety. Mayor's fire truck is the summit fire truck. It's coming from the west. It adds up to one mile of extra drive. That's two minute, that's two minutes at thirty miles an hour. The ambulance service, Robert Wood Johnson is the uh township provider. They come from, yeah, from New Brunswick. And they uh come from eighteen, they're coming from the west. That adds two minutes to it. And they, uh, come from eighteen, they're coming from the west. That adds two minutes to it. This is unacceptable. People die in less than two minutes. Okay? And then I started looking at what my cost was. My direct cost for this volume is about two hundred and eighty dollars a year. And I said, well, let me, uh, think a little bit more and ask my neighbors. So I wound up asking thirty nine people representing twenty eight households. Everybody wants that street open two-way. Only one person came out and said, one, two-way or no-way. That's the only know that I got out of every anybody. So that's a one hundred percent. We got three hundred, and we got a hundred fifty houses, twenty cars. Luckily, we have three hundred plus cars in the neighborhood. If you take seventy five trips a day using that street, three hundred sixty five days a year, you wind up with twenty seven thousand three hundred trips a year for roughly thirteen, over thirteen thousand five hundred miles. Put it plainly, that's over three thousand pounds of gas, which is going to hit the environment. I don't know how much carbon dioxide that makes, but if you ask your, uh, asthma, someone who hasn't suffered from asthma, it would happen. I'm sorry I came late. I know this was past, but everybody was complacent and basically. Cost. If you have, uh, fifteen, uh, seven, uh, seven cents a mile, which I don't know if you can operate your car, maybe about twenty cars that you can operate at seven cents a mile appreciation and all that. You know, it's only nine thousand dollars we spend. And the getting the finances, we're spending nine thousand dollars for a street that we paid for when we bought the house. I think that's pretty poor, uh, boom double. Nine thousand dollars for a street that was closed to us. This is one way. Time. I calculated something like about four hundred fifty hours. And if you, uh, put dollar amount, that's only ten thousand dollars. I mean, this is a put dollar amount. So that's like over nineteen thousand dollars out of your business. It finalizes a lot. Twenty-five dollars for what we paid to the fastest to keep you in the, uh, the house. These are all four bedroom, two-car garage houses. Up in the house. So then I'll also look at where it was. You have three hundred feet of street, the piece of Collins Drive into South River, uh, into Montesola. Now, everybody told you, oh, it's a, uh, it's a one-way street, but it's a two-way street. Everybody looked at you, that's an oxymoron. They say, at least, that's a complicated curve curve. Or it's very ambiguous. My solution was you make Collins Drive all one-way, which is not the perfect way because you're going to get a lot of complaints, names. You still don't get complaints. But the cheapest benefit and cheapest way to go is to have that open to two-way traffic. That'll save us over eighteen thousand dollars of direct, uh, cost to us. It would be a spike cost to the residents of Collins Drive, Fourth Avenue, Fifth Avenue, uh, Turri, now. I estimate something like the, uh, ten hours of time of waiting in your driveway for a car to pass. That's about all I have. Any questions?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, I have to get a, let me ask you, should I get rid of this? I'm not, I don't want to get rid of the signature.
So, listen, time is up, but I'm going to leave you with a little thought. When I did my homework on Collins Drive, the original plans show Collins Drive being closed. The only reason it was open was during the actual construction. So after the construction was completed, Collins Drive was left open when it should have been closed in the original plans. So that was never supposed to be open, ever.
Well, soon it's going to be safety, uh, has to.
So I'm happy you brought up the safety. So in literally less than two months' worth of time, I have well over three hundred videos showing people doing one-way. I have, I have two videos of people going both ways and going head-on. So listen, I know what your safety is. I'm not going to get into it because I had this huge argument with Montesola Way, Charter Drive, all that area. But here's where my problem is. When you expect that road to be a one-way, when you have kids playing on Collins Drive, you have a car coming opposite way with no regards to the people, there's my safety. My safety goes with the kids and their environment and the residents. So I understand what you're saying, but unfortunately, it does not pan out. And just for the record, every single time we do get a fire call, our fire firefighters, the first call, ninety-eight percent, I did my, uh, work on it, was coming out of George, sorry, Jackson Street before somebody even showed up. So that means Ladder Tower and Reliable would show up to a call first before somebody even showed up.
And about the ambulance.
Ambulance has thirty-four seconds less. Thirty-four seconds based on Robert Wood Johnson's, uh, uh, stats.
How do, how do you do thirty-four seconds in two minutes?
Because I, because, because when we called up and we decided we're going to, uh, chase this concept of shutting down Collins, we went to emergency management first and asked, will this be a problem? So I understand where your concern is, but unfortunately, I have to worry about the residents. It's my first priority. I understand where your concern is, but.
But you know, resident, uh, residents.
Listen.
You've got five hundred people in Harvett County, and you're thrown on the bus for safety.
They're not, you're saying to us, the road was never supposed to be open, period. Instead of my.
Why didn't they build it? I mean, and the reason, you know, they built it for some reason.
They, they, they used it for a trap, no, sorry, I got this. They used it for a service road only. Why isn't it supposed to be open?
I mean.
Period, period.
Yeah, that, they would have put a house on it. I mean, that was, this was planned by the planning board.
And, and the planning board actually says.
And it was a mess, fifty thousand dollars, it's fixed.
Planning board actually says it's a service road and it's supposed to be closed. I agree with you, but unfortunately, it cannot even be a two-way road because, uh, you have a resident's house and you have, uh, what we call trees coming on the left side, left side of the Collins Drive. So unfortunately, I understand your concern, but what happened was everybody got so used to something that was wrong. That's where the problem started. So I understand your concern. I, I take it. I, I get it. It's a convenience rather than the word safety. If I could fix the problem, I would, but unfortunately, it cannot be fixed. I'm, I'm sorry, sir. Like, I, I appreciate it.
It can't be fixed. It would, it's going to be, uh.
Like I said, if it could be fixed, I would, but it cannot.
Well, I believe, I think the, uh, the, basically, it's a big boom, uh, all, who paid for the road?
You didn't pay for the road.
She did.
No, actually, you didn't, sir.
Who paid for the road?
Not.
The builder paid for the road, and who paid for the building?
You paid for a service road that was supposed to be closed. It's on the plans. I researched it before I decided to pull this trick off. I know where you're coming from, but everyone got used to something that was wrong.
And the thirty-four seconds that Robert Wood Johnson, I don't know how you could do a mile. That's over a hundred twenty miles an hour. Someplace you do a two-way.
I'm just, a hundred twenty miles an hour on a street to do one mile. All right, I really, Mr. Perry, I really understand. I appreciate it, sir. Thank you. Anyone else for, uh?
Hello, Council Mayor. Um, my name is Edgar Brothers. I live at sixty-four Whitehead Avenue. I'm also the co-owner of Emergency Leaves. Uh, I think the Council President mentioned about businesses, so actually myself just to touch a little bit upon this. Um, it's actually about, um, another committee, but I do want to share publicly with my experience, uh, as, uh, a resident trying to open a business here in South River. So, um, really want to just, uh, say I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you guys tonight. Um, my, just here to a little background, uh, I submitted my application, went to the T R C meeting, got feedback there. At the meeting, we were supposed to have a walkthrough of the property. We followed up various times, my attorney, uh, my architect, also someone from the municipality followed up, trying to get this scheduled, and we heard no responses for it. So to me, I just want to make sure I'm right on record that I'm doing everything I can by following up, but I also need the Borough to do its part in follow up, just to, you know, acknowledge something's going on, uh, going on. Because before, when I reached out to Andrea, she's done a, that's her perfect job, just getting back to me, saying, hey, I'll go back to you next week. But we had no responses, so we don't know actually what's been required, what's been asked of Emergency Leaves. Um, so that's a concern to me. Basically, I had something, uh, we were supposed to be scheduled for tomorrow to be part of the T R C, but I was informed that they're not on it. But then when I asked, uh, what were the requirements, where are they looking for, no one can tell me. So it makes it very difficult for me to action items when I don't know what items are required.
And I'm, I'm sorry, Daniel, I was at the last T R C meeting, and they gave you a bunch of questions and requirements. I sat in there.
And what was the request from Bruce?
Unfortunately, I recall, I know there's quite a few things.
Right, the first.
Like the side door, the back, the paving, the security, the fence, the dumpsters, I recall certain things.
Right, and after that, because people were not familiar with the location, because they were saying parts were caved and the parts were, because no one has actually been to the site, because there actually has been a favor to the block, and there's actually been work done on the side because of the construction. That was why Bruce had suggested that everyone do a walkthrough, which we were more than happy to do to understand exactly, because the first issue mentioned was lighting. They did talk about lighting when they found out the city owned the lighting, then it became a favor, then it became a treaty. So my question to Todd, because he was raising this, what is it exactly that they want? Because it went from lighting, then I heard he's not wanting lighting. Also, there was confusion. What was the intent to my attorney versus the architect? So I'm just like following to understand if the meeting is actually going to happen to walkthrough, because that was a request from the town.
Well, I will reach out to you tomorrow. I'll find out exactly what's going on with this walkthrough.
Yeah, I, I appreciate it. It's just communication that way. You know, I think active on it, but, you know, I think timely responses are also appropriate, not a month later. I just wanted to share, uh, with the town my experience of, if we're trying to make it easier for businesses to open, this is an experiment of a resident that I've been submitting everything you guys have requested on a timely basis, and I don't get a response from, from the Borough.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. You'll go for me tomorrow?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I tried our forty-four first. So I was going to keep the agenda, and I noticed that, uh, the forty-five unit is part of the complex next door, giving them a thirty-year tax abatement. Which made me think you're also going to probably give away the street parking to the permits. And then I started thinking like, it was short a bunch of parking spots, so you sold them spots in the municipal lot. Which, my understanding is the lot's pre-owned. Like there are sixty-four permit spots in the lot. And the last time I got an official, uh, count of how many permits were issued, it was a hundred and sixty-one permits issued. So that's a lot. That's well over, uh, a hundred percent. So then I remembered there's a, uh, there's a main street parking strategy that was developed by our planner and adopted by the plan board and adopted by the council. And I went there and I looked at it. There's a few things in here that just caught my attention. I want to state them and then ask a couple of questions afterwards. So there's a section here that says to ensure when parking permits are sold to a purchaser, that the parking utility has a policy. A policy in place to verify that a realistic opportunity for parking is available in the municipal lot. Then in another section, it's titled Principles to Guide Borough Leaders in Making Decisions on Parking Issues. Says the parking utility should adopt a permit limit policy to guide the number of parking permits sold relative to the number of parking spaces involved. This should be between one space to one point seven percent or one space to two percent ratio, depending on the composition of permit purchasers. So we're well above that, unless of course there's been some sort of change to the number of permits issued. One of my concerns is I've been to, uh, well, I was on the zoning board, a couple of these issues came up. And it seemed as though the boards were unaware of how many permits were issued in the, in the parking lot or how many spots were removed. And I was recently at the land use board and they approved, uh, this forty-five unit, the parking that's sort of the hidden tax abatement to. And they also seem to be unaware that the parking lot is pretty full, that they went ahead and issued parking permits for it. And I know with more development coming in, uh, I'm concerned that I won't be able to find a parking spot someday when I go to work, because there's going to be just permits issued like crazy. On top of the people that park there illegally and, uh, it should be, we're going to get there. So my thing is, uh, those that Borough have a policy to verify that a realistic opportunity for parking is available. But if you do have a policy, I was wondering how I could get a copy there to review it. Because I'm sure there must be a policy. I mean, this, this is from back in twenty twenty-two. So by now, we should have had a policy. Do you have a policy?
Absolutely.
Also, uh, it should be a permit policy about the amount of permits issued. And the reason I'm asking the council is because I don't have any problems with the professionals in there. You guys are the policymakers. Everything comes down from here. And, uh, I'm sure they're not just willy-nilly. I mean, it came down from the council and said, hey, here's the policy you want to follow, which you're going to follow. I have no doubt that they will follow the policy you guys have. So I'm concerned that maybe there isn't a policy. That maybe you're not providing guidance to the land use boards when these sort of issues come up. I mean, the land use board should have guidance from the council so that when they issue ordinance, uh, guarantees for parking for these buildings, that they're not going to interfere with the existing businesses that are here. Because we need to build from what we have. We don't want to just out with the old and with the new. We don't want to just, hey, we hate these old buildings, we hate the old businesses, God, we're excited, and new people are coming. So that's my concern. I'd like to see if we have these policies. I'd like to, you know, if I had to put a over request, ensure, well, we're not looking at it. Right. So like I say, it's comforting you guys, you're policymakers, maybe not this particular council. But if the other councils have it, then it. Oops. Uh, I'd like to see you guys do it, because we just can't keep going on the way it is. And when you're downtown, uh, it's pretty bad down here. Some new people have experienced that. I've shown it to you. And, uh, one last thing, I just, didn't you just take the parking downtown seriously? And we're going to be working on the policy. Okay, because I have some other statistics about the amount of annual sales a parking spot generates for the businesses. So we take it seriously. The most serious?
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else for, uh, public? Who's calling? Second call.
Motion to close the poll.
Second. Motion by Council President, C L S, second by Councilman Shinskey.
All in favor?
Uh.
Right. There was nothing for mayoral appointments, uh, consent resolutions, uh, listen.
Whereas Resolution twenty twenty-five oh one authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore, be it as hereby resulting below listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole as of the same or individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions twenty twenty-five one sixty-nine to twenty twenty-five one eighty-seven. One sixty-nine, authorizing the requisition of funds for payment to the custodian of the school mines. One seventy, approval of a special event permit to the Portuguese Club for an event to be held on June seventh, twenty twenty-five. One seventy-one, authorizing fireworks displayed by South River Recreation on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. One seventy-two, authorize twenty twenty-five salaries of certain employees and officials. One seventy-three, resolution appointing Cara Forty as full-time dispatcher. One seventy-four, appointment of recreation apartment positions. One seventy-five, authorizing execution of a software product agreement. One seventy-six, authorizing the award of a contract with Bloom Environmental Services LLC. One seventy-seven, authorizing the purchase of a vehicle for the Office of Emergency Management. One seventy-eight, granting renewal to A B C licenses for the twenty-five, twenty-six license year. One seventy-nine, authorizing the South River Fire Department to conduct a boot drive. One eighty, authorize certain utility refunds. One eighty, authorize certain utility refunds. One eighty one, authorizing a purchasing contract with Pumping Services Incorporated. One eighty two, authorizing permanent status for a police dispatcher. One eighty three, accept May fifth, twenty twenty five regular and executive session minutes. One eighty four, authorizing those and claims list. One eighty five, authorizing pay estimate number three and closeout change order for Willett Avenue substation. One eighty six, approval of a special events permit to the DeRule Arkham School for an event to be held on June sixth, twenty twenty five. One eighty seven, authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with workers.
What is your motion? What are the residents?
Motion by Councilwoman Dallas.
Second.
Second by Councilman De- uh DeSantis.
Councilwoman Dallas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZenian?
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gertchenski?
Yes.
Council President Seela.
Yes, extension from one seventy nine and one eighty four, twenty five dash zero zero four eight six, zero one two seven five and zero one four one three.
Uh, we'll go to uh council comments. Start with uh Councilman Trenikopoulos.
I am not in the nightmare. Councilman DeSantis.
I'll be there.
Councilman DeZena.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, St. Peter and Paul Church, Orthodox Church on Weddard Avenue will be having a spaghetti dinner along with an Elvis impersonator show on Saturday, July twelfth. Dinner starts at seven P M, show starts at, dinner starts at six P M, show starts at seven thirty in the church hall on Jeffrey Avenue. Uh, tickets are thirty five dollars and it's a B Y O B. And you can also get your dinner to go and not see the show. That's, cost is twenty dollars. And you can visit the church's website, St. Peter and Paul, um, has a website that it's on there or you can contact, contact myself. Additional information and the ticket. Um, that's all I have here.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Uh, this Saturday will be the Portuguese flag raising. That usually starts, they did it at ten or they started?
Eleven.
Starts at eleven, so I guess rain or shine, it's the Saturday, daily on the gazebo side where the flag is. Um, to all of you up here, Happy Father's Day. Maybe this today.
Mm-hmm.
Flag day is the fourteenth, don't, don't forget to, you know, raise your flag with pride. The first day of summer is coming up, so be careful. The children are really busy on their little scooters. Yeah, today got a little too close because they just go down the middle of the street and I'm afraid of them. They really have to be careful. You have to be careful of them. The bicycles, scooters, whatever they can zip around town, they will. So just be careful. And a reminder, please curb your animals. I live up by the school. The children don't appreciate when they get out of their cars. Either their parents that the kids step in, whatever's left on their way to school. So I guess they have that souvenir for the whole day. So just, there's, just curb your dogs. It's not just by the school. I think it's in pretty much every. And we do have a leash law now, correct? Many, many loose dogs in this town. So this is, there is a leash law now, so you can't define for not having a dog on a leash. There's no.
How long is a leash?
I don't know. I don't always have.
I believe that's a good question. Just five weeks.
Oh, you say you're talking about a retractable one or?
Or just saying, you know, how far can the dog go?
I, I don't know what is.
I don't think.
I think it's just a habit one leash. Off the top of my head, I do not know what your word is, but we can set up and send it to you.
Thank you.
And just be careful, don't care, buddy. Thank you.
Councilman Krasinski.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank all our public service workers, uh, police, fire, especially our D P W or Robert Wood Johnson. And I'd also like to thank the town for the Memorial Day parade. Many of the veterans and everything like that, too. The most important part of the day is in the morning when we pay tribute to those that go on before us. Also, if any of the families has a veteran and your marker is damaged in some way or other, please contact the D F W or the American Legion and we'll give you a replacement for your uh loved one. Happy Father's Day coming up, uh, with that. Watch out for the kids. Weather's getting warmer.
For sure.
And you still take care. Thank you.
Council President.
Just uh to reiterate, the kids are out, they're on the scooters, they're on the bicycles. Just please stay alert. Do not text on the phone while you're trying to drive. Keep your eyes on the road and watch out for the kids because they're coming right down the middle of the streets. They're not stopping in intersections. Uh, it's a little crazy. So please be careful.
That's it.
Thank you. All right. So first of all, I want to thank Fire Chief, uh, Bill Smith for bringing this to my attention. This Thursday, June fifth, at the library between six thirty and seven thirty, the fire convention poster artwork is going to be displayed. Please come out and support the kids that put up a very nice art. I, from what I'm being told, it's, they went over beyond. So please come out to the library this Thursday, six thirty to seven thirty. I'd also like to welcome a new business that uh me and, well, Council President and myself had the opportunity to do the ribbon cutting this uh Saturday, which is located on Ferry Street, which is called Sacred Ink, a gallery, although it's a tattoo powder. They also do art. Art inside was so remarkable, the murals, the uh, the paintings. You need to go and look at this place. You don't believe it, but it's right here in your own backyard. So please support the uh new business. Um, unfortunately, they are now going out on the weekends. Take care of your house. Cut your grass. Don't do anything without a permit. Because they're gonna get caught. It's not gonna be easy. It's not gonna be on time. And they're not, they're not gonna be nice though. So do the right thing. You know, go to the town, do what you have to do with your kids. Police Department, this weekend I had probably a good half a dozen calls, all on the same exact thing. Over parking, loud music, uh, people yelling. Don't hide behind the phone for social media. Call the police department. As many times as you have to, you call them, whether it's during the day or at the ten night. There is a noise awareness. There is proper parking. Please call the police. They're there for you. Regardless of how many times it is, you're not bothering them. They may have other calls. They are gonna come up. They're gonna come, they're gonna do what they have to do. Um, we recently got a grant, possibly a two hundred thousand dollars, which is gonna be given to, or it's gonna be going to the Veterans Park, which is gonna give us a new football field in Cleveland. So we're looking forward to another grant, hopefully.
Vargel.
Vargel, I'm sorry, Vargel. Okay. So uh, look out for that, another grant at this administration as well. Uh, June tenth is the primary. Every vote counts. Please support. Go out, find your polling area, cast your vote. And uh last, Happy Father's Day to all. I know it's not easy. And always watch out for those kids. Uh, they're gone, they're out now, scooters, skateboards, running, bicycles. You never know when they're gonna jump out in the middle of the street. So please be aware, drive the speed limit if possible, even drive slow. I appreciate it. We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Dallas, second by Councilman DeSantis.
All in favor?
Aye.